Sure.
Thank you.
I don't know.
I'm going to ask here and then how um I can the on the beginning of the block party. And what about? I don't know. And they're probably like, I'm wondering about. What to the? Not like how long do you want to hold that in? I can't. Sorry.
I think I think we'll streamline the expectations, you know, in terms of somebody wanting to do a block party. Then it's the city has guidelines and so they're not doing whatever they want to do there. They have some guidelines in terms of expectations and accountability. I got a can do now.
Okay.
If I'm not here.
We will start off with one proclamation reading. And this is for our pre city USA designation. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established such a day. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture.
Oops.
Yep. We also didn't approve.
That's very good, but it was like we didn't improve the agenda.
I'm sorry. I'll go back. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Support.
Yeah. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Right, I will go back to our proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas a holiday called Arbor Day was the first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water. Cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life giving oxygen, and providing a habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Victoria Garcia Snyder, Mayor of the City of Albion, to proclaim April four twenty twenty three. We're a little bit late in this. As Arbor Day in the City of Albion. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well being of this and future generations. All right, next, I will go ahead and open up our public hearing on our twenty twenty four budget. It is seven oh four P M. If there is anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council in regards to our twenty twenty four budget. Just need to come forward, give us your name and address, and three minutes is yours. Great, seeing no public comments, I will go ahead and close our public hearing at seven oh five P M. And just later.
Yes, we just have a few comments that we want to share on this. So council, we had a series of budget work sessions on the twenty twenty four budget. So for fiscal year twenty twenty four, the general fund budget, we have estimate our revenues will be eight million one hundred sixty five thousand five hundred eighty three, with estimated appropriations of eight million three hundred eighty five thousand four seventy six. Is balanced with a planned use of two hundred nineteen thousand eight ninety three of our ARPA dollars that we have or fund balance. The total budget for all funds is twenty five million one hundred eighty four thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars in revenues and twenty three million five hundred thirty eight thousand five hundred sixty five dollars in appropriations. I believe Director Clark would just like to highlight a few things that he did change since holding those budget sessions and then allow you guys to ask any questions.
Thank you, Haley. Thank you, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the opportunity to present the board or the budget here. I do want to point out one, one major addition that we made. If you can look on the first page, I'm looking at the summary that is got the detail on it. It's page one. And whoops, excuse me. It's about third way down to account one oh one zero 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 five forty state grants. There's a footnote there explaining this. This is a project that we anticipate doing in twenty twenty four. It's a dam feasibility study. The total project will be for one point two million. You have grants from two different outfits that are going to be one point one five million. So or one million one hundred fifty thousand, so the city's portion is only going to be fifty thousand. The one point two million is being shown in one oh one, or excuse me, one oh one four four seven eight oh, eight oh one zero zero. Um, that's in the four four seven department, so that is.
Director Clark, I'm just gonna have you pause because I think people.
I'm sorry, page thirty six of the packet.
Because yours say one, I was gonna say that ours is numbered differently down at the bottom.
He was talking about the detail, so the detailed spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'm looking on the detail instead of the summary.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
On the detailed, it is one of fifty nine, but it's actually page thirty six of the actual package.
Right. And then it's five forty. Yeah, so it's it shows one billion one hundred fifty thousand. We added that to revenues that those are grants that we're going to get to help pay for the project. And then if we go to to one oh one four four seven department, which on this is twelve of fifty nine. There's a footnote in there that shows the one point two million estimated design engineering fees for the dam feasibility study. So we're going to get grants of one million one fifty, we're going to spend one point two million. So the city's portion of that is only fifty thousand. That's really the only major addition that I did. There's been some adjustments in other accounts for salaries and basically what they're not really material.
So for those in the gallery, council has had a few study sessions already to go over the entire budget. To work this out to get us here this evening. So do we have any questions from council? For our director or city manager?
I do.
Yep. Council meetings.
Yeah. Um, okay, so on the the handouts.
Yeah.
Um, I know that we're using ARPA funds to bridge that the deficit this year. Um, I know we don't have a crystal ball, but looking forward, do you think we'll still have to rely on ARPA funds to help us out over the next few years?
Um, well, we have been in a, we have budgeted for a deficit the last couple of years, but that's what we budgeted for. The actual numbers usually come up where we're positive instead of negative. So budget may not always reflect that because I try to maybe over budget a little bit just to make sure that I cover everything. But the actual numbers usually come in a little bit better.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't anticipate using general fund balance in the future unless something major happens.
Got you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions from council? You may decide you have anything to add.
No questions. I just want to say thank you to Director Clark and all of his staff for all of the time that has gone into preparing this budget. We will have the final formal packet or binder at the next council meeting, so you'll get those there and we will adopt our fiscal twenty twenty four budget, but I just, I really do, I appreciate all the work and time that you've spent getting us.
I appreciate that Connie worked very hard right up to the last minute on all the wages because it's all the different adjustments that we had to make. So I give her a lot of credit for that. But thank you so much.
You.
No. Next meeting.
All right. Public comments. If there's anybody in the agenda that would like to address council in regards to a specific agenda item, you may do so at this time again, need to come forward, give us your name, address, and three minutes is yours. All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Could you click to me go?
Council member Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Florida.
Yes.
I mean.
Yeah.
We have the November sixth session minutes, November sixth regular section minutes and our November thirteenth special session minutes.
Support.
And also hold on.
Wow, you guys.
We also have the um letter to approve uh the governor's bench for Jolene and Harry Monner senior. Do we have a motion to approve?
Support.
All the favorites.
Oh my gosh, that's hilarious.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve of the eighteen thousand nine hundred fifty dollar expense for Concord excavating?
Support.
Andrew Slater.
Yes, thank you mayor. As shared in the study session, recall we had the water rain break on Eaton Street um at the end of June. So we are looking to get that. It's all been repaired. Now we need to get it um properly patched. It is a state trunk line, so M dot does have certain requirements that we have to meet. Um we did solicit three bids included in your package is the lowest bid with Concord excavating. I did authorize an emergency expenditure to um allow them to get started last week. We had good weather. They're trying to get it paid before we entered that weather, winter weather season. Um. So we are recommending formal approval by council.
Council.
Davis.
Uh do we get reimbursement or any kind of support?
That I don't know. I would need to follow up. I will follow up with M dot to see. I'm not sure if we're able, since it was our infrastructure that caused the needed repair. I don't know if that falls something that we can submit in our quarterly billing, but I will follow up with M dot.
Any other questions or comments? City clerk Mingo.
Governor William.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Yeah, motion to a second reading of the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty three oh seven for the tax exemption, tax exemption for Kennedy Green Development.
Some mode for.
City manager Schrager.
Yes, thank you mayor. So this was shared at our special meeting last Monday. Um vote Um Woda Cooper, they are requesting a pilot um in the amount of six percent over twenty years. This is to support their life tech application for the proposed Kennedy Green project here in our community. It will be a forty eight unit um two building um apartments complex or and it will be a mixture of one bedroom, two bedroom and three bedroom apartments. So this is just the second reading um of the ordinance. Attorney Harkness in his law firm did prepare um the ordinance. I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to include.
Yep.
So I don't know. Lars was here for the first reading, so I don't know if he brought it up, but um we built in a repealer. It was so because it's set for twenty years um in twenty forty three, the ordinance will automatically repeal so that the next tax year, it'll be back on the tax rules automatically.
Any other questions or comments? Either Attorney Harkness or City Manager Snyder.
I. I have just a legal question. So um does this um taxes M status affixed to the property or is it fixed to the company wishing to develop it? In other words, if this company decides in five years not not going to do it, someone else comes along, does it, does that then that tax exempt status stay with the property regardless who owns it or just if this particular develop?
So the pilot is for the property because it's property taxes, but I don't think you can just walk away like that because it's contingent. I'm getting a mishna mortgage.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? City clerk Mingo.
Councilmember Reed, yes. Jackson.
Yeah.
David.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. Next is our discussion on the correspondence from Garen, Luke, Cohen, Miller, uh the attorneys that will be conducting the investigation into the EDC. We have the email exchange in the packet. I'm not sure.
That's right. But yeah, clerk Domingo reached out to the firm once council approved their, the proposal we received from them. They did confirm that they would be able to do the investigation for your ten thousand dollars um max amount that was included in our RFP. They said that they will be mailing us the signed affidavit just stating that no one contacted them prior to submitting a bid. And then they said, Mr., is it Giluli?
Yes.
I'm assuming this fact. I've never met him, so I'm not sure.
John Giluli has been assigned to handle this. However, he has a trial set to go through this Wednesday, the twenty second. After that, he will then be available and begin doing this investigation. So we just wanted to provide the correspondence that clerk Domingo received as an update.
Any other comments? No further discussion on this topic?
No.
Next is the discussion on the update of our twenty twenty three strategic goal. Yeah. Councilman Williams wanted this um the authentic Councilman Williams, do you want to lead this discussion or do you want City Manager Snyder to lead?
Um let me have a few first. Thank you. Um. So we set the um the councils, well, not the councils agenda, but we we set the um strategic goals early in the year. And I think it's always good to revisit the goal so we see how we're tracking um. This keeps council informed and it also provides an opportunity for the public to be informed of the things that we're doing um here in the city to help the city. Um with that being said, City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Williams. Um so when you guys set the strategic goals, there were four um focus areas and then there were um different goals or tasks underneath each of those focus areas. And then we went through and prioritized them from one to three. One being obviously the top priority, three being it's still a priority, but maybe a little later. Um if you read through my report, I'm happy to share a lot of the task have work has been started or some has has even been accomplished. Um I mean, happy to say some of the our lower priority items have um work has begun on any of those. Um I'm happy to answer any questions, but if you can see um City Hall staff, we have been very busy in the short few months since April when you guys adopted these.
And I I see also that there was a lot of um, there's a lot of heavy lifting on your part. Um through through collab- collaboration with the rest of staff and the boards here in the city as well. Um the dam project, um I see that's moving along pretty well. And that also coincides with a lot of funding, grant funding and different things that I know you have to um work cohesively with a lot of different organizations in order to get those things executed. Um the infrastructure, the water infrastructure and the the financing that went along with that, um the nine point one million dollars in grant funding and then the different bonds and other things that we have to execute as well in order to um make those projects feasible. So you know, there has been a lot of heavy lifting that's taken place over the course of this last the last year, but also the last eight months, six, eight month. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just for everyone here and then our community, a lot of the work that we've done, I don't want to say it's the boring stuff, but it's a lot of infrastructure work has been done. Um and a lot of times that's of the water main and sewer main that's underneath the road that you really don't think about. Um it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, with the exception of our roads. We know that we that is one level of infrastructure that needs a lot of attention and I think we are taking steps to address that. Um but I think right now the city's focus or city administration's focus is getting the necessary maintenance and improvements to our to our large infrastructure that we have here. So.
Right.
Big focus.
And just to piggyback off of that, I I um I'd like to implore council to look at some of the um, the items that's in there. If we know that we can possibly bring um some additional information or help to um to those projects, let's have discussions about them and let's speak with the city manager so that um things aren't going undone and left on the left on the list, you know what I mean? So um I myself will be more than happy and willing to engage and I'll be looking through this document to do so to see on what I've seen in other areas that could maybe be beneficial here to help to check one of these things off the list for us all.
That's it. I think we've made some good progress this past year based on the information provided to us um. You know, a lot of these things, they, Councilman Williams said it takes a lot of collaboration um to meet the goal, so I think this is great for the city to see that, you know, our city of Albion is working for the community.
And it's a nice idea to put it in writing because we know it's being done, you know, but to put it in writing is for the verification.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Wonderful.
Thank you.
Attorney Harkness.
As council rolls under this next agenda, my suggestion would be whoever makes the motion to make the motion to approve it with whatever you want the fee to be, just to avoid having to do amended motions.
Alright, so fun.
If any of our memories were good enough, you'll remember it.
Um I would move um that the city uh approve of the block party application process with a fee uh of fifty dollars.
Support. Alright. City manager Snyder.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So um council, as you can recall, we've recently adopted our amended ordinance to allow for block parties. Um so with that, we have created an application and we now need to set a fee to um for residents to hold those events. We proposed the hundred dollar fee, however, based off of the discussion um from our study session, we would support the fifty dollar fee um. Just something because we are providing a still a level of service to the community. Um and if we have to respond, whether it be public safety, public services, um just making sure that that time is covered and we're still offering another option or activity to our residents.
Um two things. One, um we just need to make sure that once we set the fee tonight that we include the new fee in our annual adoption schedule of fees.
Yep.
Um which should be easy. And then number two, yeah, I don't know if council recalls the ordinance, but another thing that'll be coming before council is um in addition to the application, uh the ordinance requires that people applying for a block party have to sign a block party agreement. Some of the things that are going to be contained in them that are, they have to clean up after themselves, like they can't leave garbage in the street, they have to release the city from liability, things like that. It'll be hopefully a simple one page that can go along with the application, but that's going to be coming to you hopefully in the first meeting.
Yes, thank you. Um when we do the applications, can we do the the carbon copy style applications? Is it possible to online?
We can look at about all of them.
Oh, okay.
Put them online and we're, we're doing fillable PDFs.
Okay, perfect.
Online.
No, that's great. That's perfect. I just want to be able to keep track of it um so that, you know, everybody's able to keep a copy. But online works a lot better than anything else, so.
And usually we get a copy of um requests, so we will have it.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm through with street sweepers this year. It won't be around again.
I don't believe so. I need to, I need to follow up with superintendent um Garrett to see if it's possible, but since it's late in the season, I don't anticipate it getting back out um this year.
Alright, moving on. Oh, alright. City clerk Mingo.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Reed, yes. And Mayor Snyder.
Yes. City managers report. I'm just going through my packets.
We're almost there.
Feature agenda items. Anything that council would like to see brought forth? Attorney Harkness.
I I mentioned this to the city manager before the meeting. We have to do our annual um public uh employer contribution to medical benefit opt out. Um the state statute requires uh that we notify them if we're, if we're not doing the eighty twenty um arrangement. The city, the city currently does ninety ten. We pay ninety percent of the uh health insurance contribution, so we have to do an opt out every year, so we'll have that resolution for council the next week.
Councilmember Williams, you have your hand up.
No.
Um I don't have the name per se right now, but honorary of um street designation. You wanted to honor um a few, a couple individuals.
Street.
Yeah.
Street designations.
That's like dedication.
Yeah.
Like what they did for Irene.
Any other items? What was it?
Just the budget.
I get, yeah. Public comment. If there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address council, you may do so at this time. Just need to come forth, give us your name and address and three minutes in shorts.
Hi, my name is Virgie Ammerman. I live at three oh five East Main Street in Homer, Michigan. I'm the current president and CEO of the Albion Economic Development Corporation. And I just wanted to express my appreciation to council for your consideration of the pilot for the Woda Cooper project at thirteen thirty seven uh North Eaton, which will be uh called Kennedy Green if it's if the uh award is granted. Um this is a mishna application which could take multiple rounds to accomplish, but I appreciate you at least digging in and uh and supplying the um the appro- the approval for the pilot for this time around. So thank you very much. I just wanted to express my appreciation.
And anybody else?
Uh Patrick Golding, Woda Cooper Companies. Um just kind of want to echo what Virgie said. Thank you all for um everything you've done in helping us with getting the um pilot for the Kennedy Green project. Uh we're really excited about this um project and um really excited to bring the needed affordable housing to Albion, so I just want to thank you all.
Anybody else like to stand and address council? Alright. City manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Copy of my report was included in the packet. I just want to highlight just a few things. Um the city, we did submit our application to for Mishna CDVG Housing Improving Local Livability Program or their CHIL program. Um that was due on Monday, November thirteenth. We, our grant application is um, we are request seeking five hundred thousand in CDBG funds to go towards home um improvements here in our community. Um just a personnel update effective um today, Monday, November twentieth. Council will serve as the acting director of public utilities and Elmer Garrett as the acting director of public services. Granger, um they have added a few um additional pickups for the leaf pickup. Um there's a lot of yard waste to collect right now and their group has kind of fallen behind, so they've added a few more days. They will do a sweep through town on Monday, November twentieth and twenty seventh to collect anything that's curbside. Um so if you have any extra bags or if your bin is still down by the road and it's full, they will collect it um Monday, the twentieth and twenty seventh. And then they will also run their full route on Wednesday, November twenty second, as well as the twenty ninth. The twenty ninth is the last day for leaf um curbside pickup, so we've had some good weather. Um I know there still are some, a few more trees with leaves on there, but hopefully they drop and then we can get them, get them all picked up by the twenty ninth. Um City Hall, we will be closed this Thursday and Friday to observe the Thanksgiving holiday. And with that, I just want to wish everybody a safe, happy and healthy um Thanksgiving holiday with um family, friends, relatives, whoever you may be gathering with. And I just want to um share my thankfulness for my wonderful team here at the city of Albion. I have a great um group of team members that I get to work alongside every day. They really do a lot of the work that we all see um in our community see, so I just want to say thank you. I'm very thankful for all of them. That's all I have.
Councilmember Harris.
Uh I was just looking at under human resources, uh the new CPO AM da 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 uh one one twenty three, that'd be one one twenty four minutes to begin in the final stages of negotiations. It's just on the human resources. See, this is on this app.
Yes, it should be twenty four.
Twenty four.
Right, I thought so.
Councilmember Collins. Senator Jackson.
I know I stated that I was going to uh just give an overview with some of the things that we got going on, so I see that there is um we've already been in uh closed session, so there's some things that should not be brought out until um hearings and other things take place, so I won't jeopardize any of that, so anything for this present time.
Any other comments? I guess I would just like to echo uh City Manager Snyder's sentiment about enjoying the holiday break. I think a lot of people are looking forward to having some time off from work, uh the stresses of life, so I'm hoping everybody has the opportunity to be able to have some downtime with either family or friends. Um you know, for the students getting a little break from, you know, homework assignments, you know, projects, things like that. Enjoy the time that you get to have with your friends if you're not going home um. And council members, hopefully you have a little relaxation and everything will be back to normal on Monday. I have a motion to adjourn.
So move. Support.
Oh, I am so sorry. I have a motion to excuse Councilwoman.
So move. Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned eight twenty four P M.